It is now six thirty. We're going to call this regular meeting of the Chavano Park City Council to order. Item number two, Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. The pledge will be led by Pete Miller, and Lee Powers will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation for...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On a sunny day when the light is abundant, a candle's flame seems insignificant, almost lost. But in a dark room, a small flame can make a big difference. The candle's light illuminates the darkness, allowing someone to see obstacles in their way. Heavenly Father, like the candle, guide us to where our presence makes a difference in the lives of others. May we be the flicker of hope in someone's despair, the warmth that dispels loneliness, and the beacon that leads others towards love and understanding. In your name we pray.
Amen. Item number three, Citizens to Be Heard. There are no citizens to be heard, which brings us to item number four, City Council Comments. Buddy?
Welcome, everyone. Good to have you all here.
Maggie?
Thanks, everyone, for coming, and we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Conrad?
Good to see you, everyone.
Pete?
So, yeah, so I'd like to recognize one of our superheroes of the city. And so I went to go look up what a superhero is. It says a superhero is defined as someone who possesses extraordinary abilities and uses these powers to fight evil and protect the public. They often have strong moral codes and are dedicated to making the world a better place to live. So we have a superhero who's celebrating their 10th anniversary with the city on September the 22nd. He serves as all the city departments at an executive level to gather data to allow people to see the bigger picture more clearly. Over his 10-year period, he has transformed from a planner to one of the leaders in our city government. He is an individual who drives change in our city and manages our IT infrastructure. However, it is often difficult to recognize a city's heroes because they just look like the average person. So I thought it would be appropriate to give the superhero something so he stands out in a crowd so that all our residents know that he is a superhero. So Curtis, can I get you to come forward? And I would like you to put that on.
Or not, as the case may be.
And I'm not done yet.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So there's other people I'd like to recognize, too. Our fire department and our police department will be the honor guard at the next UTSA game, which I am very proud of just to see. The other thing I'd like to do is recognize our... We went to the Hog Wild, which is sponsored by our attorney and his firm, and so just want to appreciate all the effort that they put into that. It was a great seminar.
Thank you very much. Lee?
Well, believe it or not, folks, this is a big crowd for this room. And in the future, it's not like church, you don't have to fill in from the back. So we're welcome, and we hope that we live up to your expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. One note from me as far as future events upcoming. National Night Out will occur the first Tuesday in October. We will not have another city council meeting between now and then. There is a special video that is going to be circulating at Blatman Elementary from our police department encouraging the participation in our annual poster contest. I commend the police chief, and I do appreciate him throwing down the gauntlet to the fire department when they come forward for Fire Prevention Week next year. Our police chief is always an innovator and is always leaving our fire department, unfortunately, sometimes feeling like they are the roadrunner and the coyote with our fire department being the coyote. So, Chief, I want to commend you for being the roadrunner of our city this year. And I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review the video. If you have, let's give him a great round of applause.
Okay.
Just remember, everybody loves the fire department. Police department has to try to buy their effect.
Okay, that was great. Okay, item number five, Presentations, Commentations, and Announcements. We are really excited to have two great citizens here today from the Payroll Org who we are going to present proclamations to. Payroll is actually important. I don't get a salary anymore, but I used to. And for those of us who have received salaries and continue to, we know how important the people are who deliver the paychecks and prepare all that information are for us. And Payroll Org is one of those organizations that is out there and providing nationwide services. Our proclamation reads, whereas the Payroll Org and its more than 20,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the nearly 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the public, the American system, by paying wages, reporting workers' earnings, and withholding federal employment taxes. And whereas payroll professionals in the city of Chavano Park, Texas play a key role in maintaining the economic health of the city of Chavano Park, carrying out our diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding, reporting, and depositing. Whereas payroll departments collectively spend more than 2.4 trillion annually complying with myriad federal and state wage and tax laws, and payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding systems. And whereas the week in which Labor Day falls has been proclaimed National Payroll Week, I hereby give additional support to the efforts of the people who work in the city of Chavano Park and of the payroll profession by proclaiming the first week of September Payroll Week in the city of Chavano Park, Texas. Now, therefore, I, Robert Warner, Mayor of the city of Chavano Park, and on behalf of the entire city council and citizenry, hereby proclaim September 2 through 6, 2024 as National Payroll Week in the city of Chavano Park, National Payroll Week. And witness thereof, we have a proclamation. And I would like for Mark Coyne Dro and Kelly Kats to come forward, please.
Mark, come on up here and we'll get your picture. Congratulations. You have to take it home. At the end of giving, Kelly, I'd like for you to have a few, say a few words to this as well. So if you sign me, so over here, Kelly, come on up, come on up. Kelly, good to keep this proclamation, too. And on behalf of the city, we want to thank you for all that you do in keeping your mother in line as a member of the city council. She has got a force in our community. She's gotten here, and I know that a good part of that force has to do with you and the level of balance that it takes to be the leader that she needs for all of us. Thank you so very much. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you on behalf of my organization, Payroll Org, and payroll professionals from all around the country. We, as an organization, represent 20,000 and many more payroll professionals around the country. And those are, if you don't know, those are your favorite people at work. They're the ones that make sure you get paid on time, every time, each payday. And it's a very important role, but also sometimes a very thankless role. So proclamations like this go a long way in helping them feel valued and shining a spotlight on the important work that they're doing for all workers in America. So again, they... Excuse me, thank you so much. And I'm going to share this with all of our members over the coming weeks. So it's going to get a big splash on social media and all of our publications.
Well, I hope that you laud it over all of them, that you have been recognized and that those poor people in San Antonio and other communities just forgot, forgotten.
I will let them know.
We appreciate you being with us today, Mark. Thank you very much. And how long have you been a citizen of Chavano Park?
Since 2019.
2019. Well, welcome. And we missed your arrival because COVID came in between. Hope that you and your family are having a wonderful time with us.
Oh, we are. We love the community. Thank you so much for everything you do. And yeah, I'm going to tell my wife to come to the next meeting. This is a lot of fun, actually.
And I'm hoping that you all will make National Night Out with your family.
Oh, we always do, yeah.
And remember, snowballs will be... It's going to snow in Chavano Park the first week in December, the first Saturday in December. City ordinances permit snowballs to be thrown at fathers and grandfathers without any discretion or any dispute. Mothers and grandmothers only by specific permissions. Just letting you know.
My kids will enjoy that.
They will enjoy that, yes. Please bring them out. Good to be with you, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Item number six, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve and/or accept items number 6.1 through 6.4? We have a motion from Lee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Item number seven, City Managers Report. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each item, discussion will generally occur. Does anybody want to approve, pull any of items 7.1 through 7.5? There being no request. Brings us to item number eight, Regular Agenda Items. Item number 8.1, Public Hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments from members of the public on proposed rezoning of the 22-acre lot at Loop 1604 Frontage Road in the city of Chavano Park, legally described as City Block 4782P36, a 21.7293-acre tract, City Block 4782P2, a 1.0093-acre tract from Business B2 zoning to an office zoning to mixed-unit development, MDX zoning of mixed commercial and density, single-family residential uses. It is now 6:44. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I just, in an overall summary, just to remind everyone, the city has been carefully developed, and there's been a master plan of sorts originating from the Rogers family, but then working in cooperation with city councils and planning and zoning commissions in a long term, a long time in the history of Chavano Park. We've got, as identified in the town plan, one remaining significant property. We have a number of other properties that exist around the city, but this 22-acre property was highlighted in the town plan as something that should be deliberately developed. Next slide. On August 19, 2024, the city received a rezoning request to rezone the 22-acre lot north of Huntington along Loop 1604 from the Business District B2 zoning and Office District to a mixed-use zoning district, or MXD. And that would include mixed commercial and density, single-family residential uses. So there's a diagram of that basic concept there. The little box that's on the highlighted top left-hand corner, you can see where there was a B2, and that's the area that's broken out that would be projected to be rezoned. Go to the next slide. I want to highlight that a mixed-use district is a zoning district that allows a combination of residential, office, and commercial uses, which may or not be in the same building. And it provides a lot of flexibility in the planning and construction of the development in accordance with an approved site plan. So what you saw before was the initial approved site plan. And go to the next slide. Yeah. In your packet, there was the governing regulations of the MXD, but what I'm showing you here is an existing MXD that's west of this location, commonly known as the Pond Hill MXD. And you can see that we had Pond Hill Villas 1, Pond Hill Villas 2, and we have Commercial Lawn 1604 with a planned restaurant. And you've got some green space and all that stuff that's working. So very similar to this concept, where on the frontage of 1604, you got commercial and retail. And then back a little bit deeper, you have some sort of residential. That's what this was proposing. So next slide, let's see if I'm tracking here. Yeah, so at the September 4, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, after a public hearing, the commission unanimously approved, recommended approval of the MXD zoning process. And so this is a... This slide here is a concept of a similar drill, and I'm going to turn it over to the Bitter Blue representatives at this point in time. And they've got a couple of slides to kind of show you what their vision would be associated with this.
Thank you. Caroline McDonald with Brown and McDonald, 100 Northeast Loop 410, here on behalf of Bitter Blue Development. As Mr. Hill stated, we are requesting the MXD zoning district to allow for a mixture of uses. The current B2 district allows for the commercial and hospitality use. It's the 39 townhomes that we need this zoning change for. And so this is an example of townhomes in San Antonio. It's actually right over at the Quarry Market that Bitter Blue is currently developing. They're called the Quarry Heights Villas. Can we go to the next slide? Here's some renderings of what the Quarry Heights Villas will look like or do look like. They're a little bit Mediterranean, so of course, the development in Chavano Park will meet more of the aesthetic that the community is known for. Here is it under construction and some of the ones that are built. It's a gated community, security access, and private streets, just like the proposed development here in Chavano Park. Here are some of the completed townhomes and some still under construction. A different view, again gated, secured access, two-car garages with some off-site parking as well. That's it? Okay. And so with that, we respectfully request your approval of the zoning request, and we're here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Caroline. Bill, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Well, we reviewed the current site plan. It provides sufficient detail to meet the requirements of the MXD, as designated to be flexible. And there are processes that are in place to amend it, whether it's considered a minor amendment as a major amendment. So there's still flexibility in the development, but this allows the initial kickoff of the development. And I think it's consistent with the town plan and what we envision for this property.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Are there any citizen questions, comments, or concerns that would like to be raised at this time? There being no citizens who would like to share their comments at this time. It is now 6:50. The public hearing portion of this agenda item has come to a close. Brings us to item 8.2, 22-acre MXD rezoning ordinance. Number O 2024 010, rezoning of 22-acre lot at 1604 Frontage Road in the city of Chavano Park, legally described as City Block 4782P36, a 21.7293-acre tract, and City Block 4783P-2, a 1.0093-acre tract from B2 and Office District to mixed-use development, MXD zoning, a mixed commercial and density, single-family residential use as a first reading. We're now open... We are now going to move toward discussion and action on this. Curtis, looks like you're up.
I have nothing to add. Bill did a good summary, but if you have any questions, we have all the Bitter Blue team here.
Okay. Caroline, if you would stay available in the event that the city council has any questions or comments. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance O 2024 010 to rezone a 22-acre tract of Loop 1604 Frontage Road in the city of Chavano Park, legally described as City Block 4782P36 and City Block 4783P-2 from B2 Business and Office District zoning to mixed-use development district, MXD zoning of mixed commercial and density, single-family residential uses. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Buddy. We have a second. We have a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion. Pete?
So, Carol, a quick question. One of the things that, as I look at the diagram that I'm really impressed with is the walkways and the green belt that you have. I mean, the people in the area, around that area, just love to go walking, and it creates more paths for them to do that. My question has to do with the maintenance of that. Is that part of the responsibility of the city in order to maintain not only the walkway but all that green area up there? Is that the city's responsibility? Is that going to be the responsibility of the homeowners there and the commercial aspect, or whose responsibility?
So there will be a property owners' association for the retail and the hospitality tract. Then there will be a homeowners' association for the townhomes. And so I believe it will be a mixture of that in conjunction with the city.
So the city will not bear any cost? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is my understanding. I believe it will be the property owners' association.
And will that be shared equally with the commercial as well as the residential?
I think Bill wanted to chime in. I just want to make sure I'm not misstating.
Well, I know that the road is... The road there is a public road. That road will be public, the one you see, says Collector Street at that point in time. The actual MXD zoning, I don't think, addresses the specific responsibility of who's doing this, and that will probably be fleshed out later on. I don't know.
Yeah, and Pete is referring to the trail system that originates on the southwest end of the picture.
I'm Laddie Denton with Bitter Blue. In this instance, we'll probably keep the HOA and the POA together on this. We messed up the structure in Pond Hill on the west side, and on this side, we'll ensure that we have a cooperative structure between the commercial association and the residential association. I think we keep it all internal, not city, not city maintained, because it is so integral to the overall project, and it's the amenity for the hospitality tract that we hope to use in attraction.
Okay.
So, and we do not yet have... We haven't worked out how that's going to work financially between the rates on the townhomes and the rates on the commercial owners, but that we will have.
Conrad?
I'm just curious, the time that a home is for sale, available for sale, to the time that, let's say, you get 30% sold, referencing the Quarry project, what's kind of your projection here where you get a lot of these homes sold and on the books?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
When the house is available, or these condos, townhomes are available for sale to the public, the time period from there to, let's say, 30% of it being sold, referencing the Quarry project, like, do you have a kind of an estimate on how quick these things, not get sold out, but sold in, you know, substantial portion?
We're thinking three to five years, depending on where the market goes and interest rates and the other things, all the uncertainties that you deal with.
A lot of variables, yeah.
If, in a good market, it'd be three years. And, you know, hedging that, it's five.
Okay. Laddie, just as kind of a base point, how long did it take for Pond Hill Development to break ground and to get to the point that it looks like almost everything's sold at this point?
In Pond Hill? It's been about three and a half years.
So Pond Hill 2 took about three and a half years to go from breaking ground to its... I think it may have one or two lots that are left that are being built, but that have not been sold yet.
I'm just curious. We don't really have the financial obligation, but there's something in there that will... So I'm just thinking about that.
Maggie?
Okay. I have a question on the townhomes. As a former townhome owner from years ago, I loved my townhome. It was the right thing to do. It was in a beautiful area, but as I... And this was in Houston. And when it came time for me to sell, the market wasn't there. And I was already told from the get-go that, don't buy townhome. The market value is not there. Okay, but I did it, and I don't resent it. I loved it. It was fine. Worked for me. But I'm wondering, like, you're building townhomes in the quarry. How are your sales on that? And I know you wouldn't do anything if you didn't think there was a good market. However, I need a little comfort.
Well, we had a little problem in the quarry. We had to change builders. Our partner, who retired midstream, and we took about a year to reset, refine someone that we wanted to partner with to finish out the project. And that's what we're doing now. We've built five. We've built about 70 or 80 townhomes in Oakwell Farms back in the 90s and the early 2000s, and there has been no problem there on resales. As the community matures, obviously, Chavano Park is already a mature community, and we don't expect any of that kind of problem with these townhomes. And the construction complication of building a townhome changed significantly over the last 25 years, and we had a learning curve to achieve there in terms of sprinklers, all of the things that are now required in a townhome. So our expenses were a little higher than we wanted to be, and we've corrected that. That's why we built five, and we're building out of it now. And we have one in the custom under construction, and we have two other pending. So we'll build out the rest of the project, the rest of the community. It's only 13 units, so we'll build out the rest of them custom. Did I answer your question?
Yep. Pete?
So I'm going to extend on to Maggie's question. When I looked at the pictures of the quarry, it looks like it backed up to a golf course. Is that correct?
Yes, we did. We did Lincoln Heights with Alamo Cement as our partner. And yes, that was... We did the golf course with a golf course developer.
And I get that. I mean, I'd love to have a townhome like that back up to the golf course, because you don't have any maintenance to do, and you have the luxury of the golf course. But as you look at these, I'm trying to think of the amenity that attracts people other than being part of a great city. What's the other amenity that the individuals have to be part of these townhomes?
Well, it's 09, adjacent to Alamo Heights, Alamo Heights School District. You can walk to just about any place you want to go, either buy food and get any restaurants you want to be at. You're overlooking a golf course. It's... I don't know how to explain it. It's also below the upper bench that we did. This is the lower bench. The upper bench that we did all the way around are very expensive homes. This was all single-family, not garden homes up above us, and they were sensitive to that. And this was the residential product that we picked to put below them.
Okay. So it's basically the lifestyle, right, that's attracting people in order to be part of this?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Laddie, we have a number of nationals who live in Chavano Park who enjoy the convenience that we offer to the medical, 1604, and all the other things that come with being in the central location that we are. How will this affect the balance of the market? Because if I'm a national coming to Chavano Park, going into the townhome seems a whole lot easier because I don't have to deal with a yard anymore. And do you see any impact that this has on our secondary market for the million-dollar homes that are in Bentley Manor and Willowood?
Not sure I understand your question.
Well, we have a lot of Mexican nationals who live in Bentley Manor.
Yes.
And we have a number that also live in... And we have a number that also live in Willowood, but there are more of them living in Bentley Manor and also in Chavano Creek. And they, they appreciate the security that we offer here. They appreciate the convenience that is here. When they, if, if you have a choice between these townhomes and living in those neighborhoods, which are great neighborhoods, I would think that a lot of people are going to opt for, I don't want to take care of the yard and all of the inconveniences that go with that. How do you think that that affects that secondary market for the homes that we have in those neighborhoods?
The market that, that we have, we've worked with on, on the townhomes at the Villas is primarily a couple. Basically, they're retired or professionals looking for an endpoint with convenience and what the realtors call lock and leave. They're going to go somewhere and I, I wouldn't imagine a lock and leave type person would also want to have a big yard and a pool and, and the big house to take care of. I can speak for myself. I'm real tired of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Pete, one more question.
One last question. So we're also very excited about the hospitalities and I think everybody on the board is, is excited about that. So just, just to kind of understand, I know that backs up to Huntington. And the concern is the, how high do you suspect that would be? I know the details aren't worked out yet, but how high do you project that to be? And how many rooms do you project that to be?
Three stories. Obviously you have a high restriction that we'll have to abide by. And probably around 100 to 110 rooms is what we've been working with. Again, that, that market's been difficult, continues to be difficult.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve, or, thank you very much, Laddie, Caroline. We have a motion to approve ordinance O 2024-010 to rezone a 22-acre tract of Loop 1604 Frontage Road in the city of Chavano Park legally described as City Block 4782 P 36 and City Block 4783 P 2 from B 2 Business and Office District zoning to Mixed Use District MXD zoning of mixed commercial and density, single-family residential uses. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Brings us to item number 8.3, public hearing. Public hearing concerning the creation of Chavano Park 1604 Public Improvement District pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code. It is now 704. We will open the public hearing portion of this meeting. Curtis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Very similar to Bill for the public. I'll explain some of the background on this. And then we have Patrick Burns with Sundance Analytics and he'll launch into the financials behind all this. But as a background, this is a public improvement district, which is an economic incentive that is authorized by state law. Pids are petitioned by property owners who wish to create a special district that with taxing authority. The creation of the pit enables a leveling, levying of additional adware tax when the property is within the pit. This in no way affects what's being considered tonight, any other property owners in the city and the tax rates they will pay and anything that's being discussed here. The purpose of the pit is to help the developer fund pit, public improvements. So everything we saw in the last there, the roads, the utilities, landscaping, drainage, all the diff, the sidewalks and trails. That's what it is to fund, not necessarily the construction of the businesses, the townhomes. While the 22 acres, as Bill alluded to in the last gen item, has been discussed for many years, including the 2022 Town Plan. The pit discussion really picked up steam here on August 6th. City staff met with Bitter Blue to discuss this agenda item tonight. On the 14th, Patrick came here to refer to City Council in a workshop and presented the preliminary numbers and the concept to City Council. Of course, no action was taken then. On August 19th, we officially received the petition from Roger Chavano Park, the home, the property owner. And then on August 26th, City Council took the action to accept that petition and schedule this public hearing that I'm talking in right now tonight, with an action following. The required paper notice and mailed notices were all accomplished on August 28th. So the petition proposes to create a bonded pit for the development 22 acres with up to $6 million in public infrastructure investments. With a bonded pit, the city will eventually, not with this action tonight, but eventually will issue a special assessment revenue bond for the construction of the improvements and will reimburse the developer after the such, and the bonds are repaid from assessments collected annually, which Patrick will handle here. And lastly, I also say the developer intends for that bond to be issued after construction. So we're talking really an action that would come from City Council within a year or so. With that, this is the same site plan that we discussed and I'll hand it off to Patrick.
Awesome. Thank you, Curtis. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you again. We, we've now had this discussion a few times, so I'll just touch on each of these slides very briefly. As Curtis mentioned, the pit is a two-part process. Tonight's process, part is that we are requesting that the pit get created. At the time that the pit is created, a boundary is created only and we set a maximum authorization amount, the $6 million that he mentioned. It's the second part of the pit process is when we actually go and levy the assessments. We're not requesting that that be done this evening. That will come at a later point in time after we've put in that public infrastructure and utilized it, utilize it as a reimbursement process. But just wanted to clarify that tonight is the first step, the creation. At a later point in time, we'll come back for the levy of the assessments, the second part. These are just some preliminary numbers that we had put together as we're looking at how we're going to structure and reimburse those public infrastructure in the future. Again, not at tonight's meeting, but we're targeting, or at least preliminary estimates, are looking at about a $4.5 million bond on this project. We asked, we requested the $6 million authorization because between now and the time that the improvements are constructed, we're not sure if improvement costs will increase. It just gives us a little bit of cushion there as we move forward for unknown variables. One of the things that we're really looking at when we structure this is what kind of impact we're putting on the ultimate property owners? And will they be able to continue to make those payments to the bondholders? So we wanted to make sure that that ultimate annual installment that would repay those bonds is kept on the low end of the range. So you can see here in section B of what I'm showing here, we're trying to target a pit equivalent tax rate of about 52 cents. We want to make sure that this is manageable to those property owners and is within the, the, the competitive standpoint of other pids that are done in the region. Some of the project costs, the pit would be utilized to fund public improvement costs. Pids can only be used to fund public infrastructure, so we're looking at roadway, water, wastewater, retaining walls that help to keep that public infrastructure in place, as well as some of those parks and landscaping costs that the City Council had mentioned they wanted to see to allow those trail systems, the walkability throughout the project. Here is just kind of a, a breakdown of some of the product types, townhomes, various commercial types, and the type of annual installment that we'd see on each of them. What we really wanted to point out there again is that we're trying to keep that equivalent tax rate, those annual payments low on the property owners. And then this last slide, just kind of wanted to point out, at buildout, we anticipate nearly a $75 million total value of the project, which would generate annual property tax revenues to the city of about $230,000 a year and total annual revenues to participating jurisdictions of over a million and a half dollars per year. That kind of ends the, again, a quick overview of some of the slides. We've gone through them before, with you guys before. So just wanted to turn the time to see if there were any questions you had of me.
Thank you, Patrick. Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add during the public hearing portion of this meeting?
The only thing I would add is that the, the actual packet is pretty extensive. It has a lot of details in it. And there's a resolution that has been proposed that you'll be approving. And that resolution's been worked by our bond attorneys. And then there's a number of exhibits in it. I'm not going to go over in detail, but includes the, the meets and bounds, the property description depiction, a dissolution agreement and a number of other things. And after all that has been coordinated between our bond attorneys and, and Bitter Blue's attorneys with the Rogers. That also went to Dan Santi and that was reviewed there. And so this is all very, very tight.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Are there any citizens' questions, comments, or concerns at this time? There being no citizens' questions, comments, or concerns. It is now 7:11. And the public hearing portion of this agenda item come to a close. Brings us to item number 8.4, discussion action, consideration approval of resolution R 2024-013 of the City Council of the City of Chavano Park, Texas authorizing and creating Chavano Park 1604 Public Improvement District within the corporate limits of the City of Chavano Park, Texas in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code. Authorizing a dissolution agreement, resolving other matters instant and related thereto, and providing an effective date. Bill?
I have nothing further.
Okay, Bill, we need an effective date.
Well, that effective date is when you sign it and approve it. It'll be, you know, effective today.
Okay, it'll be effective today. Okay. I just wanted that clarified. Okay. Thank you very much.
We usually don't put that language in there, but our, our bond attorney put that in there, you know, in terms of that.
It was a new expression. Does anybody have, is there anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
No, again, this is the, the first, the first action we took tonight was the rezoning. The second is the, is the pit, which really establishes the infrastructure. And as we've been working with the developer, an ability to do that offsets the cost initially, which then makes the, the further development more attractive. And this will be done in phases. The initial phase was planned to be the residential townhomes. And then as, you know, and, and, and that will go based upon the market. And we'll see three to five years, but then as that gets kicked off, that'll help reimburse the, the pit. That will allow other development opportunities. All this will have to be platted. So it'll, it'll again be done in phases, initially being platted with the townhomes. And then as the other properties are developed, it will go from there.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a motion? Pete?
So I'd like to move that the City Council approved resolution R 2024-01 authorizing and creating Chavano Park 1604 Public Improvement District and authorizing a dissolution agreement and authorizing city manager to negotiate final terms of said agreement in consultation with legal counsel.
Okay. We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Conrad. We've been asked to have an effective date. Pete, do you have an effective date? As of the date of execution of the agreement. Okay, very good. I'm glad. Okay. Conrad, you agree with that clarification as well? Yeah, okay. We are now open for discussion on item 8.4. Do we have any discussion? Pete?
So, so Patrick, I, I couldn't have you come all this way without asking you a question.
Yeah, no worries.
So, so every time I go to a hotel, I get, you know, they tell me the price is $250 and then I go pay for the bill and it's like 300. So there's always hotel taxes and additional rev, or additional things that get tacked on to that. So cities tack on additional taxes typically to hotels. So my question has to do with, if we, once approving this pit, does that in any way affect future taxing that, that the city could put on the, the hotel?
No, it does not. This is a separate assessment above and beyond that. So it does not impact or constrain your ability to have your hotel occupancy tax rate. Does not impact that.
And does it still keep the hotel competitive?
Yes. That, that was part of why we wanted to look through, looking at those equivalent tax rates to make sure that it did still maintain competitive.
And that, that has been baked into the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes.
Lee?
Bill, this is for you. You've been swimming in this the longest. I have to ask the question. I see some really large numbers with two commas in them. This causes me to think about exposure to the city and its citizens. From your perspective, having been involved in this, is there, and what is, our biggest fear for the taxpayers and the citizens of this, of this community should this fail at some point?
Yeah, well, I'm pretty confident in the develop, the developer's concept and his ability to make this work. As we've been briefed before, there is zero risk to the city in terms of having to come. If something unforeseen, unforeseeable was, occurred, we're, we're taking out the debt, but this is secured by the property values and Patrick and, and the other attorneys can, can work this out. It's secured by the property values of the property, not the city.
Thank you for that.
Patrick, you want to give a little bit more elicitation on that?
Yeah, so, so as a reminder, when we create the pit, which we're proposing to do tonight, no assessment is placed on the property. So there is no risk there. Okay? At the time that the assessment is levied, will come before council again, council can approve to place the assessment on the property. That assessment is secured only by the land within the district. Okay? So the bondholders would only be able to come over, again, come to that land and that land acts as collateral for that assessment. That assessment is paid off by those property owners. There, this is a common tool that's utilized throughout Texas. To date, there has never been a default on a pit bond, where they've had to draw and default and come and use, foreclose on that property. One of the things, first of all, when the bonds are issued and appraisal is done, and so they utilize a very secure method to make sure that the value of that land is, oftentimes the, the metric is two to three times greater than the amount of the assessment that's placed on the property. So there'd have to be a significant decrease in land value in order for that land to even be the same value as the bonds. The other thing that is done is there's a reserve fund that is set up at the time that the bonds are issued. So in the event, there are a significant number of property owners that don't make that payment, they can always draw on that reserve fund before any default occurs, so that those bondholders are paid. But once again, this debt is completely secured by the land within the pit, so it will never come against the city. The city is not liable in any way to secure or cover this debt.
Thank you. That does answer my question. You filled in a couple of blanks that I had in my own observation of what's going on. But I will, I will take exception to one point.
Yes.
Three to five years. I don't see the, the growth in this part of town. If where you're putting is, I, I believe it'll be sold out in three.
That'd be wonderful.
That's my personal prediction, noting what's going on in the market in this area right now. And this is Chavano Park.
We, we would all love to see that as well.
Okay. Buddy?
Don't sit down yet. No, and that's all great. We see the numbers and everything else. We also see that your number's at 75 million approximately with a total buildout. You have $40 million that y'all are anticipating on the townhomes, leaving a surplus of 35 million. And I guess in commercial properties with the hospitality and everything. With three to five years, what's that, everybody's talking about protecting the bondholders and the development costs. What about the city? Eventually, you're going to have infrastructure costs. You're going to have increased costs by the police and the fire department, project development. You know, I know whose water we're using. We're using saws. And what's that going to cost the city? My concern is, is there enough money coming in between the time y'all build and the time everything's ready to substantiate or to go ahead and pay for the infrastructure costs that the city's going to have to burden, providing infrastructure to the, to the new area?
Again, the, the infrastructure onsite will be constructed by the developer and then dedicated to the city. So the city won't be paying for those onsite infrastructure.
Sure. But I'm talking about the outside stuff, the police protection, fire protection, the upkeep of the area by public works. I mean, at some point, I mean, the city's going to have to pay for it.
So that, that's traditionally paid through by property taxes?
And is there enough there to support that?
Yes, because they're going to continue to pay property taxes in the same way that any other development would be required to pay. So in no way is the pit offsetting or reducing any of that property tax obligation or responsibility. So they would pay the same rate that any other development would be required to based on the appraised value from the county.
Okay. And, and I think that that probably, that question goes back to the chiefs as far as adding the 22-acre footprint within the current boundaries of the city. Does that provide any additional stress as far as our patrolling is concerned and our fire and EMS coverage? And, and if the answer is no, then y'all can demonstrate by that or you can come forward and address that if, if it doesn't, just a no. Okay, if the answer is no. Okay, if the answer's no. Okay, Conrad?
I guess it's a little bit of change on the, oh, the seventy-five, what's your projection of the hotel valuation of that seventy-five?
Let me go back into the detail there.
Sorry.
No, no problem. Give me just one second here. Let me confer with the, the developer. I've got it broken up into summary categories there.
Okay.
Okay, we, we broke them up, as you see on this slide, we've got the different commercial tracts, so give me just one second to confer with him, which one is the hotel? So it's combined with some of that other commercial in one of the, the twenty million dollar ones there in either, is it on the?
Four acre tractor.
Give me one second.
I think he said twelve to fifteen million is the construction.
Plus, plus the value of the land. So it's one of the twenties is what that sounds like.
Looks like it's the twenty point two one, the three point nine six acre.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, Pete?
So Patrick, as we went through our bond process for the road, one of the things I never realized going through this is how many restrictions there are when, that they put on these, these bonds. So my, my question is, is how much flexibility is there in the development of the, so, so let's say is this goes on for, let's say, multiple years, and the, the view of, or the picture changes and you want to change the development? Is there flexibility within the bond to do that?
So it, it's less of the, the bond, that's more of a zoning question as to how much flexibility it can be done there. So I'll answer related to the bond, and I'll let Caroline answer regarding the zoning aspect of that flexibility. The flexibility regarding the bond, one of the things that, that's beneficial about the PID is that, as I mentioned, will come back before we levy the assessments. At the time that we levy the assessments, we anticipate the infrastructure will be complete. We should have contracts in place for the vertical development, so we should know what is going in at that point in time. So traditionally, we see very little change at, at the time that the assessment is levied. And I'll turn it over to you for, from a zoning standpoint.
Yes, so if there's a substantial change to that MXD site plan that was approved earlier this evening, we would have to come before you. If there's a change in acreage, a change in the use, minor amendments can be approved administratively. I think if we have to rearrange the road, or, you know, just move a little, the dog park somewhere or something like that, that can be done. But any major change would have to come before you for approval.
Okay, thank you, Caroline. Any other questions? There being no other questions, we have a motion from Pete and a second by Conrad to approve resolution R. two zero two four zero one three, authorizing and creating the Chavano Park sixteen oh four public improvement district, and authorizing a dissolution agreement, and authorizing city manager to negotiate final terms of said agreement in consultation with legal counsel to be effective as of the date of this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, five oh. Brings us to item eight point five, discussion action, consideration and approval of resolution R. two zero two four zero one four of the city council of the city of Chavano Park, Texas, approving and authorizing the execution of professional services agreement between the city and the developer of the Chavano Park sixteen oh four public improvement district and resolving other matters related thereto. Bill? Curtis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this before you is a professional service agreement to recompensate the city for all the administrative costs for, for establishing the action, the PID that was actually just taken. So up here, you see it's a preliminary estimate of all the consultants that'll be using this, including eventually a decision to, if we're gonna hire a third-party PID administrator, that is the recommendation for bond council. They're set aside twenty thousand dollars there. You can see for our financial advisors, bond councils, city attorneys, everything. Bill mentioned about how this is tight, well, that costs, but this will be compensation from the developer to the city. Under the agreement, the developer will deposit thirty thousand dollars in a new city fund which all PID consultant and legal fees along with public notice costs will be expended from. And once, there's a mechanism, once it reaches five thousand dollar minimum, a ten thousand dollar additional has to be deposited in the fund. So this professional service agreement is another mechanism to help protect the city as we're going through this process for the first time. And it has been reviewed by our bond council and our city attorney, both. Include my presentation there.
Thank you very much. Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I think this would, this is a fantastic, you know, mechanism for assuring that we're going to be protected and, and continue to collaborate and work with the developer.
Okay, thank you, Bill. At this time, I'll, in a tender motion on item eight point four. Pete?
I can make a motion. I move to approve resolution R. two zero two four dash oh one four, approving and authorizing the execution of professional services agreement between the city and the developer of, of the Chavano Park sixteen oh four public improvement district, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate final terms of said agreement in consultation with legal counsel.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Conrad has seconded the motion, we are now open for discussion. Is there any discussion? Okay, there not being any discussion, we have a motion from Pete and a second from Conrad to approve resolution R. two zero two four zero one four, approving and authorizing the execution of professional services agreement between the city and the developer of the Chavano Park sixteen oh four public improvement district, and authorize the city manager to negotiate final terms of said agreements in consultation with legal counsel. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Brings us to item number eight point six. Laddie, we want to thank you and Caroline and Patrick for all coming out here. We appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you on this project in the future.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Item number eight point six, election boards, commissions, and committees. As a part of the city council process, the city council has a subcommittee who reviews the candidacy of members and will make a recommendation to the city council members. At this time, I'm going to recognize Pete Miller. Pete?
Curtis, yeah, thank you for bringing up the slides. So Maggie and I were on the committee to, to go through this process, and I just wanted to highlight some of our insights and discoveries as we went through this. So there were twenty applicants, and we, and we have eighteen positions. And we kind of, through this process, I wanted to, to talk to the thing that we have on the stand, and it made it very, very difficult for me to, to do the whole process, and very, very blunt. We interviewed eight of the candidates, and one of the things I wanted to point out is most of these interviews went over an hour. We had one that actually went over two hours, and Maggie and I did very little of the talking, so it was, it was just listening to what they had to say, and be able for them to, to tell us, you know, what, what their background was and skills and passions, so.
Circuit microphone for Maggie.
Do you want me to repeat all of that? No, no, sorry.
I think I got most of it, thank you.
Oh, it was so good, I, I'll repeat it.
We were good.
But anyway, where I left off, most of the interviews went over an hour. We gained a lot of insights on their skills, and also the passion, as you kind of go through the, the resumes that, that were given to us, it's hard to really pick up what their true skills and passions were. The, the, we also, as we kind of went through this, the interviews identified some opportunities, and I'll go through that in a minute of, of what some of the opportunities were that, that we found. The other thing that we asked is, we asked people why they were doing this, so we, we gained a real good understanding of why individuals applied and why they were interested in doing this. And then the other thing, I guess I was amazed, is the candidates came through, they thanked us for the time that we spent with them, and a lot of times, they, they thanked us multiple times for doing that. And we provided an opportunity to answer questions, and the other thing that Maggie and I tried to do too is really understand their leadership qualities. And we focused on that and had them express, you know, what their leadership qualities were to understand a little bit more about the, about the candidates. As, as we started this process, we really kind of focused on just putting people in slots, and then we realized that we actually needed to step back and look at the whole situation, and, and look at the teams that we were creating, making sure that we get the right people in the right spots, and create, and looking at the team dynamics as well as that, and the skill sets that people had, and making sure that, that all that, that all that came together. So that was, that was briefly kind of what we went through. Maggie, if there's anything that you'd like to add, or if there's any questions about kind of the process that we went to before I go to the opportunities?
No, I, I think you well, you well covered it. We, we, again, we were very pleased with the, the folks that applied, with the quality, the interest in Chavano Park, you know, and moving forward and, and so on. It was just, it was just, we were just very pleased about it. It was making, it was made it our, our job pretty tough, but we think, we looked at putting the best person into the right person into, to the slots that we had.
Yep. Okay, Pete?
All right, let, let's go to the next slide, and I wanted to talk a little bit about, as we went through this process, what the opportunities that kind of popped out. The, the first one was, and we, we can't do this tonight, but we would recommend that we probably put this on our agenda for next time, was considering adding alternate, either a position or positions to the water board. And the reason that we would do that is that, when, when you look at the water board, there's a lot to learn on the water board and, and a certain knowledge that you have to gain, and that, that only comes through time. And so this would allow an individual to gain more familiarity with the Chavano Water Park syst, Chavano Park water system, and actually the associated issues that come with that. The other thing that the, the water board is actually gonna focus on this next year is putting together a strategic plan, and it's kind of to address a kind of current and future needs, and making sure that we have a very stable sys, a water system. And so we, actually, there was an individual that came forward that would just fit that, that bill perfectly. So I, I think that's something we ought to consider, is creating alternate positions on, on the water board. The other thing that came out is, at the last city council meeting, we were talking about a potential candidate for the beautification committee, and we asked Maggie to, to go ahead and, and staff that position, as she's the chair of that committee. But as we went through these, we found the, the perfect person with the passion and the insight, who, who's actually lived in different cities and have seen this done very, very well. And he expressed to us, you know, what, what this might look like. Maggie, do you want to touch on, say anything about, about that?
No, this, he came up with some fabulous ideas that, and areas that he had worked in before, and I thought, well, gee, this is something that Chavano Park, we're gonna, we're gonna jump on it. This was the thing to do. I did talk with him this afternoon, and he is interested in being on that committee.
Okay, did you appoint him, Maggie?
Yes, I did.
Because, okay.
I did appoint him.
And you, you're welcome to tell us who you appointed as a part of that process.
Oh, okay, is, sure, his name is Lawrence, no, I forgot his.
Obst.
It's what?
Obst.
Oh, obst, it's obst.
Obst.
Yes.
But he goes, but he goes by Otter.
And he goes by Otter, which is another exciting, interesting story. But, no, he was, he was pleased, that's what we needed, we needed him to be, that that's where he would, he would like to serve.
Yeah.
Talking, go over different things with him, and he just came up with some great ideas.
Yeah, and he's actually relatively new to Chavano Park, he's been here for three or four months, and actually brings a lot of fresh ideas, so I thought that was.
Exactly, we're very pleased.
Very pleased with that.
Okay.
And actually, if, if we include, you know, we had twenty applicants, eight, or in eighteen positions, by including this position, and if we add an alternate on to the water board, we've actually have the opportunity for everybody to participate, which is something else we, we thought would be a, a big advantage.
Right.
The, the one thing is, we did go through this, one thing that did concern us is we have five spots now available on planning and zoning. And, you know, that's, that's another position that actually, or another function that takes some time to understand, and we were concerned about that. So one of the other recommendations is that we schedule and conduct a P and Z training workshop in October to bring the new members up to speed. So we would recommend that, that we consider that and, and ask the city staff to be able to provide that for us. And then the last recommendation that we had is, we kind of went through this process, we would have liked to have done some more due diligence and done some more interviews, that, we just ran out of time. And so the, I don't think we quite have the timing right in our ordinance, and so I think we need to really go back and take a look at that for next year, and modify our ordinance to where it allows more time, and that we can interview and also do some due diligence.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. Do you have anything else? Maggie?
No, we're, we've.
So we, we'll open it up for questions. I mean, again, we spent probably over ten hours interviewing people, so.
At least. We had a schedule around football games too, that was very important, so it was kind of wobbly there for a while.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, if there are not any questions or comments, at this time, I'm gonna turn to Alderman Conrad Kirkedall for nominations for the planning and zoning commission. Conrad?
So looking through these resumes, impressive. So we're lucky to have these people that are willing to serve. So I think I'm gonna nominate Donna Balada.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Donna Balada.
Donna, yeah.
Bennett Klosner. William Thorpe. And I was on the fence about all this, so. Taryn Ensel. What, what was the last one? Taryn, Taryn Ensel?
Taryn, yes.
Okay, and if you would provide a clarification on who would have the one-year term?
I think I'll go with Donna.
Donna is currently serving a two-year term.
No, no, she's in two-year, okay. Then I guess William.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion from Conrad to appoint Donna Baladi, Bennett Klosner, Taryn Ensel, and David Zay to two-year terms, and William Thorpe to a one-year term to planning and zoning. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Conrad and a second from Maggie. We're now open for discussion.
So I'd like to make an alternate proposal. Alternate motion.
Okay.
So, so I, I agree with, with all the recommended, or all the ones that you've made, the only one that I've, would, would change is for Clausen.
Klosner.
Klosner, Klosner. I'd put Kyle in that position. Kyle Horland, Horland?
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to substitute, and this would be an amendment because you're only making one, as opposed to a replacement of the primary motion, the primary motion would still stand. We have a motion to amend, to amend the primary motion to appoint Kyle Horland as in the place of Bennett Klosner. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to replace Kyle Horland with Bennett Klosner. The motion to amend is going to take precedent over the primary motion, and so we're now, we will now discuss the amendment and the substitution of Kyle and Bennett. We're now open for discussion. Pete?
Yeah, so one of the, as we went through these interviews, one of the things that really impressed us is Kyle came forward, and he is a relatively, or he's been in Chavano Park for thirteen. in Chavano Park for thirteen years. Uh, he has relatively young kids, so he brings a new perspective on the board and, uh, the, the other thing is, he's a veterinarian by, by training. He, uh, he also is on a leadership, well, he's moved over and he's on a company now that does scientific research. Uh, he's on their, one of their boards. We asked him if he had any kind of past background on leadership and he kind of went through a long ordeal about the leadership that he's had, the fact that, uh, he's led boards before, uh, and actually, all of the individuals that, that we've listed have really strong leadership qualities. We were, I think, as, as we interviewed these individuals and they walked in, walked out, they, we were very impressed with their leadership abilities.
Okay.
Maggie?
Yeah. And, and also, we had to step back on, on all of these and, and go back to, to our, our goal is to find the best person for the job. And we felt like that Kyle was certainly, uh, an asset and, uh, to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Okay, Conrad?
I think I just, I'll defer to the committee on this and think that, uh-
Okay, so are you willing to accept the nomination of Kyle as a primary and so that we don't go through the amendment process, that your motion is now to appoint Donna Baladi? Donna Baladi?
Kyle.
Taryn Ensel, Kyle Horland, and-
David.
-David Zek to two-year terms and William Thorpe to a one-year term. Is that your motion?
Correct.
Uh, Maggie, are you willing to accept the modification of Conrad's motion such that Donna Baladi, Taryn Ensel, Kyle Horland, David Zay would be appointed to a two-year term and William Thorpe to a one-year term to planning and zoning?
Yes.
Okay, the primary motion is now amended to be as read. We're now open for discussion on the primary motion. Do we have any further discussion on the primary motion? Okay, there being no discussion on the primary motion, all in favor of naming to two-year terms of planning and zoning Donna Baladi, Taryn Ensel, Kyle Horland, David Zay, and to a one-year term, William Thorpe, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, five-oh. Conrad will now entertain a motion to the Water Committee.
So, I'd like to make a motion to renom-, uh, bring Sam Baki back. Stephen Fleming, Thomas Payton. And, um- Megan's, well, that's it, right?
Yeah.
We have an alter-, we don't know, we're not doing an alternate.
We're not doing an alternate. Okay, we have a motion to reappoint Sam Baki, Stephen Fleming, and Tommy Payton to the Water Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Lee. We're now open for discussion. There being discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, five-oh. Conrad will now consider the Investment Committee.
Well, we have one choice there and that would be Lee Mateco, so I'd like to not pick him.
Okay. We have a motion for Lee Mateco. Do we have a second? Conrad and Lee. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Board of Adjustments. Conrad?
Uh, Board of Adjustments, we have, um, Bob Patek, Michael Ireland, and David is now on P and Z. I'm gonna nominate Vicki Maisel.
Okay, let me go back. Oh, um, Bob Beddick. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just zoned out for a second there and I, I didn't understand what you said. Okay.
Sorry.
So, the, the primary motion is for Michael Ireland, Bob Beddick. Okay, we have three alternate positions available. One of them was Vicki Maisel. Okay? You now have two additional ones remaining people to be appointed would be Bennett Klosner and Eric Richards along with James Freeman, Marcia Lynch, David Pierce, and Mary Young-Davis.
Eric.
Eric, okay.
Is that the?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Eric and then the, is it Bennett Klosner?
Yes. Is that it?
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion to appoint, to a full term to the Board of Adjustments, Michael Ireland, Ireland and Bob Beddick. As alternates to the Board of Adjustments, Michael, Bennett Klosner, Eric Friedrich, and Vicki Maisel. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Lee. We're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Again, um, Kristen, that was Bob Beddick and Michael Ireland for the primary terms. As the alternates, Bennett Klosner, Eric Friedrich, and Vicki Maisel. Uh, brings us to the Tree Committee. Do you have a motion on the Tree Committee?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate, um, Marcia Lynch, David Pierce, Mary Davis, Mary Young-Davis. And we need alternate?
No, there, there are four alternates.
Four totals, James Freeman. Freeman.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint James Freeman, Marcia Lynch, David Pierce, and Mary Young-Davis to the Tree Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. We're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you guys for going through the process of interviewing everybody. Mr. Thorpe is for the one-year term on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so, the one person that is left is, we've already heard about Lawrence Obest and the Obst. Depends on whether you're from Germany or whether you're from Wisconsin.
That's right.
Oh, Wisconsin. Uh, and then the other one is Megan Sewell, who is, uh, going to be proposed as an alternate to the Water Advisory Committee. That helps. Okay, uh, thank you, everybody. Uh, I will be calling all of these people over the next several days to advise them. Uh, Kristen will be preparing letters that we will send out to these people as well and those letters will come out this week. Okay. Uh, brings us to item number eight point seven, Public Hearing, Crime Control Prevention District Budget for the City of Chavano Park, Crime Control Prevention District Fiscal Year 2024-2025. It is now seven fifty-one. Bill?
Yes, Mayor, since May, we've been conducting budget workshops and, uh, budget development meetings, et cetera. The city manager proposed a budget on Oc-, August fourteenth, which in, included input for the Crime Control Prevention District. In your packet, the Crime Control Prevention District Budget Draft is in there. Earlier tonight, the Crime Control Prevention District Board, which is represented by the city council, met and they considered the budget. And again, uh, in that meeting, the Crime Control Prevention District Board recommended approval, um, with a unanimous vote to city council by resolution. So, in front of you today, the city council then has to conduct a public hearing. We have to consider our own resolution considering the budget as part of the, and which, which, this Crime Control Prevention District is part of the overall budget, but this is a specific action that has to be, uh, approved by the council. I'm not gonna go over all the great details, but our expenditures prepared in the draft budget is two hundred and eight thousand dollars for next year. And the, the full listing of expenditures can be located on, uh, on the attached budget document in the Agenda folder. I want to highlight the six major items. Uh, the first one is the purchase and equipment of two patrol vehicles for an estimated cost of a hundred and fifty thousand. The, the lease, the fourth year lease payment, the fourth year of five. So, we got one more of our, uh, our vehicle and body warm camera systems, that's about thirty thousand. Uh, the purchase of a drone as part of our UA unmanned aerial surveillance system, that is ten thousand, uh, about ten thousand dollars. Training for licensed peace officers, about eight thousand. National night out, seven thousand, and the purchase of body armor for our two fire marshals who are also certified police officers. So, again, uh, the action in front of you is a resolution approving that, which will be part of the major budget and that summarizes my, uh, my comments.
Okay. Are there any citizens' questions, comments, or concerns at this time? There being no citizens' questions, comments, or concerns, it's now seven fifty-three and the public hearing portion of this agenda item is closed. Item number eight point eight, Discussion, Action Resolution R. 2024-015, adopting the Crime Control and Prevention District Budget for the City of Chavano Park, Crime Control and Prevention, uh, Crime Control and Prevention District for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Do I have, uh, Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, there being no, nothing further, I, at this time, will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number O. 2020, uh, uh, to approve Resolution R. 2024-015, adopting the Crime Control and Prevention District for the City of Chavano Park, Crime Control and Prevention District for Fiscal 2024-2025. Do we have a motion?
Some.
We have a motion from Lee and a second from Pete. We're now open for discussion. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item number eight point nine, Public Hearing, Proposed Annual Operating and Capital Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Bill? Uh, it is now seven fifty-four, we will open this portion of the public hearing.
And again, just to remind you, there has been an awful lot of work done on this budget and it's going to seem like, um, we're going to consider this lightly and, and not go into all the details because of all the hard work done by the council and the staff beforehand. And I'm not just saying that. We, we have a very deliberate and extensive process for developing a budget. The budget process is, in my opinion, improved every single year. We've done a lot to try to keep the costs down, at the same time, deal with inflation. The bottom line associated with that is that this is the second reading at the September ninth city council special meeting after a public hearing. Also, the budget ordinance was approved in the first reading. I wanted to go to the next slide to see if I've got something here. There was one change. And the, uh, the change is that in the court restricted fund, we had planned to put, uh, protective ballistic glass in the, uh, in the court office and in the entrance into the court and admin area. We've successfully bid that out. We've authorized the bid for that and the work is, and planning is ongoing. It's doubtful the, the work will be completed, uh, by the end of this fiscal year and it's gonna overlap into the next. And so, instead of trying to get fancy and trying to get the billing in advance and doing all that, we're, we're, we're actually just putting a placeholder this year and next year for the budget. It'll, it'll be the same cost, it's no new expense, but that'll be added into that. And then the other thing I would just say is the final version of the budget book will change everything from proposed to adopted. It will reflect your vote for both the budget and the tax ratification and, and the debit statements, all the closing summaries that have to be, uh, done. So, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, it is na-, uh, are there any citizens' questions, comments, or concerns at this time? There being no citizen questions, comments, or concerns, it is now seven fifty-seven and the public hearing portion of this agenda item is now at a close. Item eight point one zero, Discussion, Action Ordinance O. 2024-009, approving and adopting a budget for the City of Chavano Park, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October one, 2024 and ending September thirtieth, 2025, making appropriations for each fund and department, establishing a sinking fund for existing city financial obligations, providing for the levying and collection of sufficient tax to pay the interest on such sinking fund obligation, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing a savings and severability clause and declaring an effective date. This will be the final reading of this item. This will also be approved by a roll call vote. Uh, Bill?
Well, I won't belabor the point, but if I was a little bit on the ball, I would have a picture of the budget cover. Because on the picture of the budget cover is an aerial of, uh, of the road work that we did in the old Chavano Park and it's a beautiful picture. Thank you, Curtis, for putting all that together. We had the, uh, the joint color guard, uh, police and fire color guard that was mentioned there. It was the eclipse of the sun. It was a big event for a lot of people and we had a lot of, um, family activities and, and city events. And so I think it, that, that in itself speaks a lot about what we are in Chavano Park, where we put our resources and how we're working to, for incremental changes and that's all I have.
Okay, great, great. And, and if we had been thinking about it, we probably would have included that amazing Fiesta medal that was designed by our own Lee Powers as a part of that cover as well. Lee, that was, what, that was a fabulous, fabulous Fiesta medal for this year. Um, okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number O. 2024-009, calling for a roll call vote. Conrad?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number O. dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five.
Nine.
Nine. Approving and adopting a budget for the City of Chavano Park, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first, 2024 and ending September thirtieth, 2025, making appropriations for each fund and department, establishing a sinking fund for the existing city financial obligations, providing for the levying and collecting of sufficient tax to pay the interest and on such sinking fund obligations, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing a savings and severability clause and declaring an effective date of September today, fifteenth, sixteenth?
October one.
Or October one.
Yes.
Sorry. October one, 2024.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion for Conrad. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Lee. We're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, we'll proceed to the roll call vote. Alderman Alaman?
Yea.
Yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea. Alderman Kouts, yea or nay?
Yea.
Alderman Kouts, yea. Alderman Kirkendall, yea or nay?
Yea.
Alderman Kirkendall, yea. Alderman Miller, yea or nay?
Yea.
Alderman Miller, yea. Alderman Powers, yea or nay?
Yea.
Alderman Powers, yea. The yays are five, the, the nays are zero. Uh, I'll place this back on the docket for reconsideration. There being no request for reconsideration. The motion is five-zero and the motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Item 611, Public Hearing Proposed Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Tax Rate. It is now 8:01. We will begin the public hearing portion of this meeting under item 811. Bill?
Next slide. So per the tax code, the governing body of each taxing unit before or the later of September 30th or the 60th day after the certified appraisal rule is received by the taxing unit shall adopt a tax rate for the current tax year and shall notify the assessor for the unit of the rate adopted. The tax rate consists of two components, each which must be approved separately. So in your packet attached is a copy of the resolution providing for the required language within Section 1 with the breakdown of the M and O and the INS rate. As the total tax is proposed to be higher than the current FY 23-24 rate, Section 2 of the resolution includes the required statement, "This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate." So in your proposed motion sheet here, it details the actual lease. There's a summary of the, of, of the thing, of the, the tax rates here. You can see the comparison of FY 24 to 25, and we also include the debt obligation to the city associated with that. So that's all I have, Mayor, and I think that the, the recommended motion states the specific M and O, which is .275606, and the interest in sinking rate being .037136.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. Are there any citizens' questions, comments, or concerns at this time? There being no citizen questions, comments, or concerns. It is now 8:03, and the public hearing portion of item 811 is at a close. Brings us to item 812, Discussion Action Resolution R 2024-012, Adopting the City of Chavano Park Effective Tax Rate. This will be a record vote. Bill, do you have anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
No, sure.
Okay, Conrad, I'll entertain a motion concerning Resolution R 2024-012.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution R 2024-012, Setting the Total Tax Rate of 0.312742 with the maintenance and operation rate being 0.275606 and the interest in sinking rate being 0.037136.
Okay, we have a motion from Conrad. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Buddy. We are now open for discussion. There being no discussion, we will now take the yays and nays on a roll call vote. Alderman Olman?
Yay.
Yay. Alderman Kautz, yay or nay?
Yay.
Yay. Alderman Kirkendall, yay or nay?
Yay.
Alderman Kirkendall, yay. Alderman Miller, yay or nay?
Yay.
Alderman Miller, yay. Alderman Powers, yay or nay? Alderman Powers, yay. At this time, I'll place this back on the docket for reconsideration. There being no motion for reconsideration. The motion passes, five zero. Item 813, Discussion Action, Record Vote to Ratify the Property Tax Increase Reflected in Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget. This will be a record vote. Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time?
Yes, next slide. Okay, so per the Local Government Code, a slight change from the last one. The adoption of a budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous year requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the property tax increase which is reflected in the budget. So this budget, the approved budget, this has already been approved, cover contains the following statement. You can see it on the slide there that corresponds with the above vote. It has to be printed in an 18-point or larger font. And also, required under the, under the Local Government Code is adoption of the budget is property tax comparisons and the total amount of municipal debt, which is included on the cover letter inside. So this, the actual language I want to highlight says, "This budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $243,344, which is a 4.97% increase from last year's budget." "The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is $79,566." That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in Fiscal 2024-2025 Budget. Conrad?
Yeah. Good. So I need, we'd like to take, make a motion to take a record vote to ratify property tax increase reflecting the Fiscal Year 2024-25 adopted budget.
Okay, we have a motion for Conrad. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. This will be a roll call vote. We will take the yays and nays. Alderman Olman?
Yay.
Yay. Alderman Kautz, yay or nay?
Yay.
Yay. Alderman Kirkendall, yay or nay?
Yay.
Alderman Kirkendall, yay. Alderman Miller, yay or nay?
Yay.
Alderman Miller, yay. Alderman Powers, yay or nay? Alderman Powers, yay. At this time, I'll place item 813 back on the dais for reconsideration. There being no motion for reconsideration. The motion passes, five zero. Brings us to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion from Lee and a second from Pete. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, five oh. We are adjourned.